Okay, good morning. It's November 5th. It's election day. It's 9:00 AM. I will call the meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners to order with a clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrick Sutton.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here. Please, if you're able to stand, join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we will move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes pertaining to items that are not being discussed on today's agenda. Are there any citizens who'd like to speak?
Norman Alasalina, next time they put in one of them underground cables, you gentlemen need to stand out there beside you. That vibrating plow, that's a man-made earthquake. You can stand 50 feet away and you'll feel it. So, we don't need to be doing it. That's the same as fracking. It's going to damage stuff. Are them cracks going to be getting bigger?
Thank you, Norm. Any other comment? Okay. Okay, at this time, we will move into our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the approval of tax rule adjustments, the approval of accounts payable, approval of payroll, approval of disposition of property, approval of county commission minutes for October the 15th, and the 22nd, and the 29th, a sub-recent monitoring plan for the behavioral court grant, and approval of the public forum agenda. Are there any items that any commissioner would like to remove or speak about? If not, obtain a motion.
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, and that passes 5-0. So, that moves us into our action items.
Home Health and Hospice Month proclamation with Kristi Potton, home health coordinator.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
November's Home Care and Hospice Month, so I would like to present a proclamation to adopt this in Saline County. Whereas Saline County recognizes the importance of providing high-quality compassionate care to those who need special medical attention, the elderly, terminally ill, post-surgical patients, chronically ill, and individuals with disabilities, and the availability of that care in a familiar and comfortable setting. Whereas home care and hospice encompass a wide array of health and supportive services and offers compassionate care to more than 5 million Americans annually, especially during times of community or personal health care crisis. Whereas home care is the patient-preferred care option and plays a vital role in Saline County's health care delivery systems, as residents and needs of services wish to live independently in their homes for as long as possible. Whereas home care services allow families to stay together and provide greater health dignity and comfort in our communities. And today, caregivers play a central role in our health care system and in homes across the country. Whereas the home care and hospice community honors the compassionate nurses, aides, therapists, and social workers who work tirelessly to make the essential difference for those wishing to receive care in their homes, as well as families, by ensuring that they can do so. Whereas home care providers encourage all individuals to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones, and their health care providers. Whereas Saline County joins in the National Observance of Home Care and Hospice Month, and we take this opportunity to encourage, honor, and support the professionals, volunteers, family caregivers, who show courage and compassion in their vitally important work helping and caring for vulnerable populations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the county commissioners of Saline County, do hereby proclaim November 2024 as Home Care and Hospice Month in Saline County and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of home-based care.
Okay. You got any activities planned for the month?
We're going to do some increased awareness on social media, and then we have some internal celebrations that we're going to do with our staff.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim November 2024 as Home Care and Hospice Month.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to declare the November 2024 as Home Care and Hospice Month. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, and that passes 5-0. I've got a copy of the proclamation to give you.
Thank you.
Kansas State and Local Cybersecurity Grants with Philip Urban, Assistant IT Director.
Morning, Philip.
Good morning. So, Saline County Information Technology is seeking permission to accept the awards from the Kansas State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program for the purchase of technology solutions. Our four projects were Think Guard Cloud Backup. That is a cloud backup solution that the city of Salina has purchased, and we were going to pay for half of it to help back up our law enforcement environment that we share. We've got Duo MFA on here. The Think Guard was for $16,928 awarded. The Duo MFA solution is $10,0530. That is for securing our workstations. Right now, we just have the typical user password. The Duo would enable us to have multi-factor with a phone or a security key, things like that, and that would just help beef up our security. The dedicated dark fiber, we were awarded $57,000. That would be for the, our island office that houses HR, GIS, and planning and zoning, and it would also include the senior center. That would save however much we budgeted next year. We could potentially reuse some of that money somewhere else. And the virtual environment upgrade is for $151,346, and that would enable us to upgrade our current server environment, bring it up to date, and let us move the replaced hardware to our DR environment, which is in dire need of upgrading as well. So, that would be a big benefit all around there. So, before we receive any funds awarded to us, we must establish acceptance of this award. By accepting the award, we acknowledge the terms contained in the following documents: the SLCGP memorandum of agreement, the DHS terms and conditions for fiscal year 2022 procurement attestation, and DHS agreement articles. And we need to provide copy of our W-9, signed copies of the award letters, MOAs, and the procurement attestation within 45 days of receiving the letter, which was October 23rd. So, our alternatives for action are approve the request and accept the awards for all projects, or deny the request and redirect staff to look for alternatives. And staff recommends accepting all awarded amounts to receive financial assistance for these cybersecurity projects. And if you've got any questions, I can help you answer them.
Philip, can you, for the folks at home, can you tell us exactly what the total amount of the awards are so they can...or do you have a total?
Back of the napkin math, you're looking at about $250-ish thousand in grants here.
Okay.
And these are, these are from the Department of Homeland Security mostly, but the state of Kansas does offer to do a 10%. There's a 10% match required from us, but the state of Kansas is covering that 10% match. So, nothing should be coming out of our pocket here. And there shouldn't be any budget impact for the next budget cycle as well. Like I said, we might free up some, some more money that was budgeted if these are approved. And some of these items have maintenance renewals, but they shouldn't take effect for another, maybe two or three years, I'm thinking.
I want to thank you, you know, your department and everything for applying for these grants. I mean, every, every little bit helps when we're trying to get stuff done, so thank you. Any other questions for Philip?
Just a quick question here. And these grants are, you're just allowing to apply for them. Are these pretty much a guarantee that you will get these grants?
We, yes, we've been, we've been, our applications were approved. So, these are just the, yeah.
Formal to you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Any public comment? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve RFA 2024-158 as presented.
Second. Having a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-158. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip.
Thank you.
Funding agreement with the Salina Chamber with Philip Smith Haines, county administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, about a year ago, you all approved some funding for the Salina Area Chamber to conduct a community strategic planning process. And we went through that with a number of other organizations, and what came out of that was really a community marketing plan to replace the Imagine Salina campaign. And the Chamber's been in discussions with various organizations around how to fund that, including potentially redoing their agreement with the city of Salina around the use of transient guest tax. And so, in the midst of all those discussions, it occurs, it occurred to me, we don't actually have an agreement. We give the Chamber an amount of money every year. It's been $30,000 for a number of years, but we don't really specify what that's for in any written form. And so, thought, gosh, it might be a good idea to do that as we're moving forward. So, proposed a simple agreement to the Chamber. They said they were perfectly fine with it. It does not commit us to a specific dollar amount. It does not lock in $30,000. It just says whatever the commission budgets for them annually, this is what they will do with that money. And so, it's really directed at that community marketing plan as well as any other supportive workforce that they do in collaboration with other economic development partners around the community. So, the request today is that we go ahead and sign off on that agreement. The Chamber has already signed it, as I mentioned, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
So, before, all we had was, we didn't have an agreement, so they could spend that money for anything they wanted to during that time. So, this time now, we got an agreement out there that's going to say, okay, this money is allocated for this. Can they come back and say, hey, is there, can we use it for anything else?
Yeah. So, in fairness to the Chamber, they've always counted our contribution as part of their revenue for their economic development division. They have divisions within the Chamber organization, and that's where they've always earmarked our money. So, I don't think they've, you know, just sort of spent our money willy-nilly in the past, but we've never really reduced any of that understanding to writing. It's always just been sort of a gentleman's agreement, if you will. So, in answer to the second part of your question, yes. I mean, if at some point, they decide that the economic development priority is not community marketing, they could come back and seek to amend the agreement as we could, if we wanted to change the direction to them in the future as well.
Okay.
This agreement is not in addition to the appropriation that we give them as a budget line item, or is it one and the same?
It's one and the same, yes. This is specifying how we want them to use that money that we appropriate.
So, is it necessary, then, to have, have it under the appropriation line, or, I mean, I'm just trying to follow that, because I know that the other appropriations that we have, we don't specify to those what they're supposed to spend it on. We just give them the money.
Yeah. So, within, so we allocate lots of funding, as we've discussed in the budget process, but within the economic development specifically, we really fund the Salina Area Chamber, the Salina Community Economic Development Organization, the North Central Planning, North Central Regional Planning Commission, and the Equafest. And Equafest, I feel like they don't really need an agreement, because the way we spend that money on the, they basically use our contribution to cover the costs at the Expo Center. So, it's sort of a, kind of a net. The North Central Regional Planning Commission, by their own bylaws, those are really considered dues for us. So, that's a little different. And then, with the Salina Community Economic Development Organization, there is a formal agreement on that one, which we renew every three years. So, the Chamber is the only one of those economic development organizations that has, where we've not had a written agreement in the past. Now, you're correct, there are other community organizations for which we do appropriations that we also don't have written agreements. We could talk about whether we should with those, but with economic development specifically, this is just buttoning up the one that doesn't have something formal.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2024-157 as presented.
Second the motion.
We got a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-157. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, and that passes 5-0. Thank you.
Meeting dates for 2025 with Philip Smith Haines, county administrator.
Once again, so before you today is a resolution to establish the meeting dates for your commission meetings for 2025. We've talked about this a few meetings ago. Commissioner Shadwick was not in attendance, so Commission asked if I would speak with him. He wanted to tweak just a couple of dates, but otherwise, it's what you saw a few weeks back, and certainly Commission discretion, if you would like to change any of those things. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, I would recommend that you approve the resolution.
No questions? Okay. Any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action, please.
I move we adopt Resolution 24-2414 as presented.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 24-2414 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that passes 5-0. Thank you. That will move us into our informational items.
Health Department update with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Jason.
All right. There we go. All right. So, this update will cover September and October. Due to some scheduling conflicts over the next few weeks, I'm doing it a little bit earlier in the quarter, which than I normally would. So, that's why it's kind of the condensed timeframe. So, starting with clinic, last month, we did the community flu clinic. The numbers of flu shots were down from the previous years, and we had probably about three-quarters more people drive-through than walk-in. And a little bit of discussion with our drug rep, that has been the trend across the board for all the places that are giving flu. So, we don't really know at this point if it has to do with any still reservations about vaccines, or if it's just, you know, earlier in the year and people want to wait. Don't really have a good sense of that, why that downtrend at this point. We are still doing flu shots as walk-in, though. However, kids under 18 need appointments because also there have been plenty of catch-up or checking on their vaccine schedules to make sure they're up to date on everything else. We do have some COVID vaccine. Just give us a call if you are looking for a COVID booster. I was looking for the chart, but there's about half a dozen different types of COVID boosters. And so, depending on what you want, or if you're just not specific about which one you want, that's why I suggested you give us a call and talk about your needs related to that one. And then, our staff attended the Kansas Reproductive Health Conference last week that was fully put on by KDHE. So, and they actually included training and education for all of our clinical staff, from front desk receptionists through providers and everyone else, at no cost to us. It was all, the cost was all covered by KDHE. WIC attended their Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition Conference in Wichita, and then Sarah Schale, she is third from the left. Then, our WIC division completed her Core Lactation Consultant Course, which is not an easy thing to do, to become a certified breastfeeding specialist. You know, these types of certifications increase our capabilities about what we're able to do and how we are able to better serve the community. And so, congrats to her for that one. Childcare hosted a pizza and partnerships just a couple of weeks ago, or to, they're trying to provide a lot of education, because there were a lot of regulation changes to the childcare licensing rules and regulations. And so, in that attempt to try and provide as much education as possible, so that providers are aware of what those changes are, and of course, it's a little bit hard to do during the day, because most of the providers are, you know, providing care, so they've had to do it in the evening. They had about 56 turnout for that one. They are planning one currently for McPherson County, is one of the counties that they service, and that date is to be announced. And then, they also attended their National Association of Regulatory Administrators Annual Conference in October. In addition, KDHE, and I just got this yesterday, so it's not in the original report, but KDHE is hosting a childcare roundtable throughout different regions of the state. November 12th, it will be in Abilene for the North Central Region. Located on our Facebook page is this flyer with additional information, as well as the, the link, because it's kind of hard to scan a QR code on a flyer with your phone, because it's on your phone. And so, we tracked down the link. We put that on there, too, for that information, if anybody is looking to register. And it is in the evening in Abilene. So, you completed the Home Health Proclamation this morning. We were able to finally hire two LPNs. So, the incentives have been helping. We've still got one R in position that we're trying to hire to complete the team. And this home health picture utilizing signed gypsies was from last year, but they will be posting that up again tonight for the rest of the week for the Home Care and Hospice Month recognition. MCH had staff that attending their Kansas Home Visiting Conference. Earlier this year, they had launched the Incredible Babies program, which is a follow-on to their very successful and impactful Becoming a Mom program. They had gotten a lot of requests about virtual options for busy parents who may not have the ability to either travel, you know, childcare issues, et cetera. And so, they launched that as a virtual program. They have multiple controls in place to ensure, you know, full attendance and participation. And so, that has launched. And then, they also were part of the McPherson County Community Baby Shower last Saturday. So, our Ryan White folks, this past Halloween, you know, dealing with HIV and just other dealing with challenges, so they tried to bring some smiles to HIV clients, to Ryan White clients, when they came in on Halloween. So, we have So we have Grandma Shark, Abby Butterfly. But they attended the Kansas 3.0 presentation, or should say Can Care 3.0, which is about updates to Medicaid in the state. They had a KU clinic in September, and the next one is coming up in October, or excuse me, November. And they have established a case management, Aaron. A case management review process with the providers that they work with at Salina Family. And they started this in September, which allows them to be able to do some crosstalk and better provide some of their services for clients. In health education, Megan attended the APHA, or the Annual Public Health, or excuse me, the American Public Health Association Conference last week with the theme of rebuilding trust in public health and science. And then I do have a correction about the opioid task force needs assessment. Based on feedback from the consultants we've been working with, they had suggested that Fridays and Mondays were not the best days to launch assessments. So that assessment launches, that survey launches this afternoon. So keep your eye out, there will be several links and several ways to be able to take that assessment, and it'll run through the end of the month. And then that will be used with the opioid task force then to develop some courses of action or action steps on how to proceed to address opioids and substance use in the community. PIO, so working with the PIO, we are launching the TextMyGov. And it's a text-based system that empowers citizens to gather, you know, to get information. And we are piloting this initiative. However, the, a lot of the county services are also within this, this text base. And it's simply, this will go live next week. We'll have the information about the numbers, about how to sign up and all of those details. But it's simple as somebody can be able to text a word, like today, voting. And then the algorithm will take them through, like, how to find the information on where to go vote. We, and this is available 24/7. So when people are trying to find information, sometimes navigating the website, not everybody's website savvy. And so if there's a link on our website that is pertinent, it'll take them directly to that, so they're not having to go through the different levels to try and find something. And we'll provide that information. And if we, you know, through that, that text logic, if it still doesn't answer the question, then it will prompt them to provide some contact information and we can reach back out and try and help them get their, their questions answered. So we'll be continuing to build on that. And I'm really excited to see what we do with this because there are more people that will text than probably will pick up a phone anymore to call and ask questions about trying to find information. And Melissa's also been leading the Seline County Social Media Committee with training and technical assistance to build up that capacity and those skills in the county for effective social media while maintaining, unlike private sector, we have a lot of rules and regulations when it comes to social media that have to be followed in order to ensure freedom of information and so forth. And so there's a little bit difference there, excuse me, than just running, say, your private Facebook account where you can delete whatever you want to. And she's also been convened meetings, completed work toward Seline County being a broadband-ready community. So what else? Administration, I had talked a little bit the last time about the mosquito trapping. And so that has wrapped up for this year. Over 16 weeks across five locations, every Monday night, we would go out, put out five traps that use dry ice as the bait in those to attract mosquitoes. But they also attract a lot more than just mosquitoes. And so every Tuesday morning, we'd have to pick up those traps, use dry ice to ensure all the insects were dead, separate the other insects from the mosquitoes, process, package those, send them for counting and typing to look for anything related to risk of West Nile virus or other types of mosquito-borne diseases. During that period, we collected 2,577 mosquitoes, with about 535 being from the Culex species, which is the type that does carry West Nile virus. This was the first year of us doing it ourselves. We had contracted with an entomologist in the last couple of years, but he moved on. So we took it on this year because the traps that were being used before belonged to that same contractor. So it has been an interesting project this summer of determining best locations and going out and sometimes early in the mornings and hearing several critters running around in the woods, you know, has made for some interesting stories after the collection of those traps. Additionally, our podcast is out, new episodes are dropping every Sunday. The turnout for that, or the listening for that seems to be going well. Second season is, we'll start recording next week, I believe. And then the third season, so we'll have both of those seasons recorded in the next month or two. And then the conversations will extend. We'll have guests that are part of the public health system here locally and as partners across Kansas to be on some of those conversations. Candace submitted an abstract to the Transforming Local Government Conference, which was accepted, so we'll, she and I will both be speaking at that conference in April. We no longer have water features at the Health Department. The roof was finished as far as its repairs, so we're happy about that one. I was able to participate in a leadership panel with the MEANQ Public Health Conference. That's the Missouri, Iowa, Nebraska, and Kansas Conference. One of the things that Candace brought back this last year from TLG was a practice called Pancakes and Priorities. And it's an employee engagement tool where we have been meeting with the different divisions of the Health Department. And I make pancakes while we have conversations around breakfast, pretty much kind of family style, and talk about some of the things that are going on in a very kind of non-business-like atmosphere. And it seems to have been, you know, we have had, I think, some better conversations because we sit there and have it with the, that whole division than just sometimes doing a survey or, you know, a very kind of formal conversation. And the Advisory Council is now at full membership. And so I'll be scheduling the two new members that you appointed last week for an orientation. And then we will be scheduling the next meeting for January. Talked about the podcast. I was also on the closing panel for the 2024 Kansas Public Health Association Conference with that whole large group of people there, including Ed O'Malley from KHI and quite a few others from across the state in both nonprofits and, you know, public health and governmental public health, state universities, et cetera. From that, we've been having some ongoing, larger kind of strategic level conversations about the public health system and modernizing that system and what that looks like. And so we'll kind of continue those large-scale strategic conversations into the future. So coming up, one of the things is the Great American Smokeout. That's for all those tobacco users to remind them about the, the ill effects of smoking as well as vaping. Be on November 21st. Public Health Thank You Day, November 25th. I'll be at the annual KAC Conference in December, which will also be my last called official meeting then. And then at the National Healthcare Coalition Preparedness Conference the week after KAC. Budget-wise, so we're still, we're still looking good. We have been, as far as revenue and expense year to year, or I should say, from last year to this year, we have been running a little bit above on revenue, which is good for our overall budget. I don't really have anything else except for if there are questions from the commission at this time.
I just got two. You said that there were different COVID vaccines. How come when you go to, like, Dylan's, Walgreens, you say you want a COVID vaccine? They say, okay, here it is? I mean.
Primarily, that's probably related to what they have. Because there are still, if I remember right, booster vaccines for Pfizer or Moderna. And then it depends on whether it's kids or adults. So, you know, as an adult showing up there and say, I want a COVID booster, is probably what they have on hand, which is more likely going to be Moderna, probably because it just has a lot, a little bit easier storage than Pfizer did with having to have it ultra cold freezing, you know, a lot of things like that.
Okay, then the other question I got is, on the, how many Narcan sites do we have that gives out free, I mean, we can get free Narcan? Or is, are there any?
That's a good question. I don't know, other than maybe CKF right now that has some type of vending machine to be able to do that. But that's the only one that I am aware of. We have been kind of looking at something like that, but we're not there yet.
I mean, I think that's, that's a pretty important thing to look at for.
Well, and one of the challenges we ran into, and this was, I think, earlier this, earlier this year, maybe end of last year, we got a lot of Narcan that was sent to us by the state. However, when they ordered it, they ordered it, although it's the, it's the exact same drug, but the packaging was the prescription-only packaging, not the over-the-counter packaging, like you can go to CVS or somewhere and be able to buy. So we couldn't just give that out. So we ended up dispersing that to pretty much mostly first responders, like EMS and law enforcement, because we were allowed to give it to them, then they could do what they needed to with it. Otherwise, to buy at this point, Narcan would be us paying for it. And that is just one of the strategies that will come likely out of, out of this. Now, as far as vending machines go, there are some vending machines for dispensing Narcan that look like a standard vending machine that, you know, you go up, you push a couple of buttons on it, and, you know, it pushes out Narcan. Some have used what looked like old newspaper machines. And those work in areas where there is a lot of visual control over the access to it just to simply keep kids and so forth from getting into that. That doesn't work like in our waiting area where you got toddlers running around, and we don't need them getting into that. So down the road, you know, to buy the vending machine and then stock it and keep it stocked with Narcan, and then ensuring that that Narcan doesn't reach its expiration date are just some of the challenges that we have to figure out and plan through.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jason?
Thank you, Jason.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Road and Bridge bi-monthly update with Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is our bi-monthly update for the month of September and October. He's pulling that up. We did, we sent 13 different employees to the Kansas Licensing Technical Assistant Program. We sent employees to the Snow and Ice Control. This is where they learn how to safely drive the trucks and navigate the roads in the, in the snow and ice. We sent employees to Public Works 1 and 2 and signing for low-volume roads. We did participate in the Public Safety and First Responders Day at El Seline Elementary School. It's one of the Salina, or the Seline County Sheriff's Offices. Put together for first responders and public safety officials to get together and, and show the children the, the equipment and what all entailed in those things. So we sent a motor grader and a, and a snow plow truck. We trained two new employees to get CDL licenses. They're now on board and have their CDLs. We did replace 18 different culverts throughout the county. I won't go through all of them, but this is just an example of some of the damage that occurs out within the county. This was done by AT&amp;T crews while they were putting in cable. So we had to go out and replace the culvert. Here's a culvert down on the county line. This one's up northwest corner. The culvert here was completely plugged and crushed. We went in and put a new culvert in there so the road could properly drain. This is down on Forsy Road. And if you look down here, this, this individual here, he had about three entrances through here, and they were only about 20 feet wide and all failed. So the road superintendent got, got with him, and we put one plug entrance here, and that replaced those three entrances that we'll never have to maintain again. And, and there's no culvert in here. So those are just some of the types of things that, that we do. This is the pipelining project. We covered the culverts for the pipelining project. When the pipeliners are done, this is what it looks like when they get done. They, they put an extension on the culvert that's there, and then they put their liner in here and any N sections that they might have. Well, to defray some of the cost, the Road and Bridge Department goes out and covers those. So we do that work, and we go out and we cover the culverts. And in some cases, this is a pipe on Farley Road. We will do some channel clearing because sometimes after those culverts have been there a long time, they're, they're silted in. And if you look at, look at this right here, you can see that culvert had been, probably been buried for a long time. And so we went in and cleaned it. This is Middle Dry Creek, by the way, so it sees an awful lot of drainage. So we'll go in and we'll clean those out, which, you know, over time, it will need to be done again. That's, it's a maintenance item. On Farley Road, we replaced a box culvert with culverts. This is an earth road out in eastern Seline County near the Solomon County, Dixon County, excuse me. This is one of those areas that probably only sees maybe one or two cars a day or a week, mostly used by pasture and the cattle people. So to put a box culvert here would have probably been in upwards of, of maybe $125,000. So this is where we go to in our decision-making process, primary rural route. Is it a primary rural route? Well, the answer is no. So we lower the level of service of the road and still provide access and not have to close the road with these two culvert pipes. This is, we did rebuild a one-mile section of Waterwell Road from Lightville to McPherson. When we redid this, we, we installed probably about six culverts, went in and redid most of the entrances. Some of them we changed out to these plug entrances. I think we were able to alleviate, get two culverts off of our inventory doing these things in that stretch of road. And then here's a picture of the final roadway, and then this over here was seeded. And so we repaired or replaced 251 signs and posts. Countywide striping project is 95% complete. We're still waiting on the asphalt company to complete some overlay work. One of them on Hallstead Road and the other one up by Pleasant Hill. We set up and removed barricades. We set up and removed barricades for multiple maintenance projects. Our motor graders maintained two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven miles of roadway. This here is the roads that were re-rocked in the last two months, I'm sorry, re-sanded, and these were re-rocked. We hauled aggregates to eighty different locations. That is six thousand two hundred and ninety-five ton of road rock, one thousand four hundred and forty-five ton of AB3, two thousand two hundred and sixty-five ton of SS8 sand, and about five hundred tons of dirt involved with the pipelining project. Our plans are to complete the striping. We have started the fall dura patch. We're preparing the plows and spreaders for winter and start our tree taming activities. And the 2024 budget, it's, it's within historical averages. We're not by any means over. We should be able to complete the year with the, the money's allotted to us.
Okay, any questions for Darren? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner comments?
I do have one comment. Last week, we took a vote on the purchase of a truck, and on that, I voted no. I wanted to go on record that I truly support buying local. My vote was more of one of protests where I'd like to see this commission look at our policy for bid acceptance and make it work for us so that we stay within our policy.
Announcements?
I do have one announcement this morning. On behalf of the county clerk's office, she wanted to remind folks, if they have been living deep underground, that today is election day. And polls are open. Do not come to the city-county building, because you can't vote here today. That ended yesterday at noon. Please go to your polling place. If you do not know your polling location, call the county clerk's office or go to votks.gov. And also, since it is election day, we want to thank the folks who are working and remind people to be patient and kind to election workers. They are volunteers. They are citizens just like you, and they're doing this to keep democracy working, and so we appreciate their efforts.
Good point. Okay. We got a study session next week. Any other announcements? If not, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion to second adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that passes five zero. We will see, it's a study session next week.